Final council meeting for the 2324 session. So I'd like to welcome everybody. Our first item is roll call. All other persons are present except for Mr. Raum. Nobody's heard from him. And then Mr. Venemen is appearing by Zoom. Tyler, my Zoom keeps starting restarting. Is that an issue on my end? Okay, there it goes. Thank you. So item two is roll call. Already did. Three is pledge of allegiance and silent prayer in lieu of invocation. Please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation.
Okay, Dean, we appreciated your pledge allegiance even though you're about five seconds behind. I had no problem. All right, so we are on to item four, which is the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting held on March 19th. What are your wishes? We have a motion by Katna. To approve?
To approve.
Thank you. And we have a second by Mr. Austin. Seeing no additions or corrections, all in favor say aye. I mean, sorry, vote, let's vote. Please cast your ballots. Mr. Venemen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried six a's, one nay. We're on to item five, which is recognitions. I guess we'll start with Mr. Bemke. So we have a plaque here that says, "An appreciation for your years' services, Alder Person of the City of Wisconsin Rapids for four years." Good, thank you for your wall. Before we move on, would you have any words?
I'm good, thank you.
Come on, it's your last meeting.
Okay, my words are, it has been a pleasure for the last four years, working with this group and staff, and so, thank you, I guess, is my message.
Thank you, Mr. Bemke. Mr. Raum is here. We'll let you get settled, but I will hand out the next plaque to Mr. Zachar. Basically says the same thing except for three years since you're midterm and being elected to mayor. So this is for your appreciation for your three years you served city council as an alderperson.
Thank you.
And you have any words as an alderperson?
Yeah.
Not as a mayor?
Tough shoes to follow, Mr. Bemke. No, I have appreciated the education that I've received over the last three years from staff, from the council, from the mayor, from everybody else that works here in the city. I'm very appreciative and I look forward to continuing to learn in the future. Thank you.
All right, and then Mr. Raum, who's got lengthy years of service from 92 to 2002, and then 2006 through 2024. So appreciation plaque for you. I was gonna say, Tom's gotta have a few words.
Not a, not a, not a speech. It's a bit of pleasure to serve the City of Wisconsin Rapids because that was my intent at the start of all of this. Not looking out for anything for myself or anything like that. Not knowing for sure what Alder Person Bemke had to say at all, but through all of this time, which actually I think, I guess if you think about it, spread over four decades, which is a long time. And some of those things, not that I take personal responsibility in, but having been a part of such as the Highway 54 extension, the extension of 34 which became 13 to Rudolph, East and West Grand Avenue being retotally done. Mariani coming to town overseeing part of the drastic expansion of our treatment plant and updates as needed. Then again, not being part of the trying to drastically cut into our library services, the knowing when and the billing to be able to say no when needed. Recognition plaque is something that is nice, but more so appreciated when people say something nice when, as you're doing things, not as on your way out, or unless somebody has unexpectedly passed away to be acknowledged. Then again, our aquatic center that came to be after actually 20 years probably of almost trying to get it to come along, to come on board. Part of, actually 15 years ago of saying yes to the rafters coming to town. List could go on, and it is something that I am proud of, of those things that have been good for Rapids. You look at the sailing and eventual closing of paper mills, but how happy people became to go paperless anyway. And then complain that the mills closed. Proud to say that over the, all those years, we're seeing two ladder trucks come to the fire department. To upgrade our police department with bulletproof vests, radios, and the like. How we brought Rapids into the 21st century. Am I gonna miss that? God, yes. I didn't do this for me. I did this for everybody here in TV land, just sitting at home watching something else on TV tonight while it's raining outside. Rapids has a long ways to go. It'll never end. The willingness that, to do things and to do this, oh, not to forget the dog park that just came on board. Not my idea necessarily, but to go along with, hey, it's a good thing to do. Question things at the right time. That's not saying no, just says there's something different that could be done, but to go then to agree to what is decided to do. Hoping that as time goes on and as things around us are changing, that eventually it's gonna be time that the city looks at what, how we can probably move into the transformation, at least to some electric vehicles. We have to do something to save the planet. It's the only one we got, as they say. Proud of what being involved with and what we have done and are continuing to do with our zoo. I guess the way I mention these things, it's because how tired I get of how negative people are in this community, in this area. We have done a lot. We've done a lot. We, not just me, it's we and all. Let's not forget, the bike trail is what we've done to entice people to come. What we've done and are looking at doing, continuing to enhance the downtown, to encourage people to come back and to enjoy what the downtown was. The list could go on, good and bad. Nobody's perfect. I just hope we don't start legislating, as they say, from the bench. That we look at doing what is good for all in Rapids. And not to hurt people by doing something. So with that, Your Honor, you know, I could go on because there are so many more things. I don't know if I said about Mariani, the Woodlands Business Park, which, you know, a lot of vacant space, but to look at what we got with medical centers and that out there also. I think, I don't think I did say what we have done with the fire stations. And as I've said and have said even earlier, is that all these things cost money. But I hope everybody here is glad that we did those things. So thank you, Your Honor. Thank you to city council. Very much appreciate and thank you to all the staff that's here and all the staff, hundreds of people that I've worked with over these years. We've disagreed at times. As in all things, you agree on most of the things, I think, anyway, even we as a council do. So with that, as a famous general said one time, his old soldiers never die. They just pass away. And as I thanked everybody, I think the one that I probably missed is, and then I'll end, is that to thank the entire community of Wisconsin Rapids and surrounding communities. And I know there is one thing that I forgot, and then I woke with because it just gave me mind. The fully upgrading that we've done with our airport, what we made that to be. And that people can be gotten in and out of here, medical needs can be more readily available. And I just hope who's here continues on looking at the good and the bright spots that Rapids has to offer. Growing up here my entire life, it's been an honor to serve. In those other words, to serve. Hopefully I did it well. But I did it, I know, as they say, to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I've actually got a few words prepared myself.
Hold on.
Hold on, okay.
So Mayor Blazer, on behalf of a grateful city, we recognize you for your service as mayor from 2020 to 2024. And I would also like to thank you for your service to the city as a, an alderperson, as a city clerk, and also as a police officer. So thank you very much.
I came prepared because I prepared something. Members of council, city staff, constituents, friends, and family, in honor of my last council meeting as your mayor, I'd like to express my gratitude for your investment of time, expertise, thoughtful debate, and support. As a team, council and staff have helped me accomplish a lot in these four years, eliminating special assessments, opening a municipal dog park, making infrastructure improvements, tackling complicated budgets, and more. Each of us have approached issues and questions with different perspectives, which created a rich dialogue and better solutions for our city. Thank you for your hard work and your persistence. I'd like to thank WFHR's James Mayloff and WSAU Michael Lechner for making my media obligations enjoyable and for supporting my goals of transparency through your direct questions and conversations. My favorite part of being mayor has been meeting with constituents and playing a role in finding solutions to your issues. Thank you for your trust, it's been a privilege to serve you. My deepest appreciation goes to my family for your encouragement and for your understanding when I was absent in favor of my mayoral obligations. So thank you Kelly, Michael, and Ethan. I told Ethan that at least this spring I will not miss a high school baseball game, and I haven't yet. So every successful leader has a great staff behind them, and I've been fortunate to have been surrounded by an amazing group of city employees. Thank you for what you do every day, it was appreciated. I do want to specifically call out Emily Kent, she's the executive coordinator for the mayor. Without Emily's support, I would not have had the successes that I've had. She kept everything organized, on task, and would listen to me when I needed event. Thank you, Emily, you are valued and appreciated. Finally, I'd like to congratulate our newly elected mayor, Mayor-elect Matt Zachar, and other persons Mandy Palmquist and Jeff Penzkover, who are here in our audience, who were recently elected. It was a difficult decision for me not to seek a reelection, but I'm confident you will execute your duties with integrity, and you will bring a fresh viewpoint to our, and ideas to the city. Thank you for these four years in office. Thank you. All right, let's get rolling on business. I don't like to sit still. Number six, consider for action or adoption, the action of the planning commission meeting at its meeting held on April 1st. Mr. Kearns?
Thank you, Mayor, and unfortunately, the meeting minutes will not be as heartfelt. Nonetheless, I will proceed by reading them, thank you. The planning commission met at 4:00 PM on April 1st, 2024, in the council chambers. Aquorum was present. A list of others in attendance are available in the community development department or the clerk's office. Again, the meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM. The first item was approval of the report from March 4th of the planning commission meeting. There was a motion by Kubashak to approve the report, a second by Gudrow. That motion carried 5-0. Item two was a request from Valvoline for a site plan review to construct a vehicle service shop at 1140 East Riverview Expressway. Staff provided summary of the request and recommended approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report. There was some discussion amongst the commission. A motion was eventually made by Daven to approve the request, subject to seven conditions. I will not read those, but they are identified. There was a second by Kubashak, that motion carried 5-0. Item three was a request from the City of Wisconsin Rapids for a site plan review to construct park improvements at Mead Park, addressed as 311 Seventeenth Avenue South. Again, staff provided a summary recommending approval with conditions identified in the staff report. There was a motion by Blazer to approve the request, second by Tao, that included three conditions outlined in the staff report. That motion carried 5-0. Item four was adjournment, there was a motion by Kubashak to adjourn the meeting, second by Daven, that motion carried 5-0. With that, I respectfully submit those for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve. Thank you, Mr. Austin. And we have a second by Mr. Zachar and Mr. Raum.
How could I go away without saying something? And I guess it's, and I see some of the logic behind it, but in item number two, yeah, you know, get to, oops, I almost had the wrong sentence, but anyway, somebody inquired about the traffic flow in the parking lot and to which was replied. It's kind of like dots continuing on, but the words aren't there of what the reply was. And that happens in more, I think, of our minutes that we have, and it relies on then maybe memory of what people have, of what was said. And then I guess if you get to the next part of clarification about parking spaces and overflow parking, that feedback was provided in about the stormwater grading, but again, not the feedback of any type included necessarily. So I just had to make those comments. I see, understand why sometimes we want to, why we want to make the minutes short, mostly to protect ourselves on what took place. But I think sometimes we short ourselves on actually saying what we did, which could be done without the fear of somebody attacking us, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments? Okay, seeing none, please cast your ballots. Mr. Venemen?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried seven a's, one nay. We're on to item seven, consider for the adoption, the action of the standing committees of the common council as follows. A is Finance and Property Committee meeting held on April 2nd. Mr. Zachar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's the Finance and Property Committee meeting, Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024. All members of the Finance and Property Committee were present except for Alderman Venemen, who was excused. Alderman Pollock sat in for Alderman Venemen. Item one, call to order, Chairperson Zachar called the meeting to order at 4:02 PM. Item two, consider for approval, the appointment of David Allen Ostrich as successor agent for the retail Class B fermented malt beverages and retail Class B intoxicating liquor licenses for SBG Apple North 9 LLC, doing business as Applebee's Neighborhood Bar and Grill, for the premises located at 4311 A Street South. It was moved by Zachar, seconded by Bemke to approve the motion, and the motion carried three to zero. The motion carried. Item three, consider for approval, the temporary retail Class B fermented malt beverages license for assumption Catholic schools at 445 Chestnut Street for a barn dance event to be held on Saturday, April 13th, 2024, from 5:00 PM until 9:00 PM. Is moved by Bemke, seconded by Pollock to approve, and the motion carried. Item four, consider for approval, the temporary retail Class B fermented malt beverages license for Central Wisconsin Cultural Center, Inc., at 2651 A Street South for the following events. A, Celebrate Red exhibition opening to be held from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM on Thursday, April 18th, 2024. B, June music on the patio to be held from 5:30 PM to 9:00 PM on Wednesday, June 12th, 2024. C, Authentic Native American Arts and Culture Exhibition open, opening to be held from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM on Thursday, July 11th, 2024. D, July music on the patio to be held from 5:30 PM to 9:00 PM on Wednesday, July 24th, 2024. E, August music on the patio to be held from 5:30 PM to 9:00 PM on Wednesday, August 14th, 2024. F, Unexpected Art from Found Objects Exhibition opening to be held from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM on Thursday, September 12th, 2024. G, September music on the patio to be held from 5:30 PM to 9:00 PM on Wednesday, September 18th, 2024. And a temporary retail Class B fermented malt beverages and temporary retail Class B wine licenses for the following events. H, 2024 Art on Tap to be held from 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM on Saturday, October 12th, 2024. And I, Holiday Gifts and Art Fair opening to be held from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM on Thursday, November 7th, 2024. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Zachar to approve, and the motion carried. Item five, review bids for the Jackson Street Bridge and Grand Avenue Bridge Lighting Project and consider award to the low-qualified bidder. It was moved by Bemke and seconded by Pollock to approve the motion in the amount of $602,935. The motion carried. Item six, request from the community development department to select a consultant for the downtown master plan project. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Pollock to approve the proposal for Bolton and Mank in the amount of $72,000 for the downtown master plan project, and the motion carried. I want to go back and read the motion for item five. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Pollock to award the bid for Jackson Street Project and Grand Avenue Bridge Lighting Project, the Current Technologies, Inc., in the amount of $602,935, and the motion carried. Item seven, consider for approval, an application for Class III Raising, Scraping, Salvaging, and Recycling Permit from Capital Recovery Group, LLC, for the Wisconsin Rapids Papermill Property, which out- property, which outlines various proposed actions regarding personal property fixtures and structures located at the property, which include 610 Fourth Avenue North, parcel ID 3402445, 300 West Jackson Street, parcel ID 3402526, 321 Fourth Avenue North, parcel ID 3401855, 510 High Street, parcel ID 3401752, 541 Fourth Avenue North, parcel ID 3401767, 610 High Street, parcel ID 3401784, 550 Fremont Street, parcel ID 3401774, 700 Dura Beauty Lane, parcel ID 3401451, 850 Fourth Avenue North, parcel ID 3402435, and parcel IDs 3402440, 3401815, 3402435C, as well as adjacent undeveloped parcels under similar ownership, see attached permit application. It was moved by Pollock, seconded by Zachar to approve the motion for the Class III raising, scraping, salvaging, recycling permit from Capital Recovery Group LLC for the Wisconsin Rapids Paper Mill property, subject to the following conditions. One, the application shall communicate regularly with the community development department prior to building, demolition, and asset removal or sale. Item two, condition two, the city may require the applicant to post an irrevocable letter of credit during demolition and/or asset removal phases of the salvage and recovery permit plan. In condition three, the application shall not conduct any active sale, salvage, recovery, or demolition actions which result in increased noise, dust, traffic, light, traffic, or other injurious activity to the public on the premises during the nighttime hours between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Motion carried. See attachment number one. Item eight, 2024 budget amendment number one. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Pollock to approve. Motion carried. See attachment number two. Item nine, out of the bills, it was moved by Bemke, seconded by Zachar to approve, checks number 20469 to 21184. The motion carried. Item nine, set next, next meeting date, the meeting time for the next financial, finance and property committee was not set and will be considered at the council reorganizing meeting on April 16th, 2024. Item 10, adjournment, it was moved by Bemke, seconded by Pollock to adjourn. Motion carried, and the meeting adjourned at 5:12 PM. That I make a motion to accept these minutes?
Thank you. Seconded by Bemke, Mr. Eom?
Thank you again, Your Honor. Just in regard to number four, and I know we've been doing this for a period of time, but it just seems that it, this has to do with a temporary liquor licenses. It used to be that liquor license, special ones, had to do with a picnic that came about, something that an organization wanted to do for the betterment of the community, to raise money, to give to something. Now it's become more and more a business group to use as part of their business activity to raise money versus where ordinary restaurants, taverns, and that get a regular liquor license. To me, it's a way of bypassing the system. And I guess that's all I have to say is that, and that I don't agree with operating that As you can see in that item, there's nine, I believe, special instances of that being granted. Thank you.
Yeah, just so you know, Tom, that under state law, the clerk could probably, those temporary. Oh, okay. So, yeah, got to change state law. Mr. Bemke?
I would like to hold out item number five.
Okay. Any other items? Everybody good with that?
I do.
What's that?
Shane.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I do want to make a comment in regards, if I may, in regards to the salvage license. Mr. Gilbert, representing CRG, is here. He has questioned the ability to also, instead of a revocable letter of credit, to possibly have an insurance policy that names the city as a co-beneficiary, and I think he'd maybe have some further comments in the event that that would be an option as well, that could be added as a condition.
Was the, I think the ordinance says that it's got to be a credit letter, doesn't it?
It does, yes.
I guess at this point, nobody's held out the item. Oh, Mr. Austin?
I would like to hold out the salvage item, please.
Okay, there we go.
Item seven.
We can talk about that, then. Everybody good with that? Okay, regarding the balance.
Yes.
Go ahead, Dean.
I said, yes, yes, very good.
Oh, sounds good. All right. Regarding the balance of the report, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion with items five and seven being held out? Okay, seeing none, please cast your ballots. Mr. Veneman?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried seven a's, one nay. Regarding item five, Mr. Bemke?
Thank you, Mayor. So we discussed this the other night. I did make the motion to approve the whole package, but since then, I've talked to, this started out as a leadership project, I believe, seven or eight years ago. That group's intention was never to do both bridges, so I guess at this point, I'm just looking for discussion. I would support one bridge, the whole lighting package, and I guess at this point, I'm just looking for some discussion, so, thank you.
Mr. Catna?
I believe we, yeah, my understanding was originally when this was discussed, that it would be the Grand Avenue Bridge.
Yes.
And, I mean, I'm not opposed to at some point, taking a look at the Jackson Street Bridge, but at this time, that seems to be the bridge that is more the center of community activities, whether it be the Fourth of July or picnic down by the river. So I would think it would make sense to go with the full lighting options for the Grand Avenue Bridge and leave out the Jackson Street Bridge if we're going to pick one.
So do we have a motion, or?
Before we, Mr. Joe Ixted, would you, would you, could you comment on how this is going to affect that bid, do you know, or how this would affect that bid?
Sure. So the, the structure of the bid is set up that any of the options are available, either one bridge or the other bridge, or both bridges, along with each of the fixture types for each of the bridges. So the Grand Avenue Bridge with the three fixture option would come to $326,573.
I guess at this point, then I'll make a motion to approve the one bridge option with, with all the lighting options.
And that's Grand Avenue Bridge?
The West, yeah, the Grand Avenue Bridge. And because there is money at the foundation, set aside, I'm not going to low bid. How's that?
Yeah, I think there's about $20,000 set aside that can be put towards that also, that the community leadership group raised.
Well, there's low bids.
Oh, who the low bidder was? Is that current?
Yeah, Current Technologies.
Okay, worth the bid to low bid, Current Technologies. How's that?
Sounds good. Mr. Pollock seconded it? Is there any further discussion? Mr. Zachar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't disagree with this. I guess I'm just throwing it out there that this benefits, it'll benefit if you're downtown and if you're, you know, up, I guess, towards the hospital, and you get to enjoy that light on the bridge. But if you're on the other side, down First Street, going towards Beeren, the one bridge will block the other bridge, so they won't really see any of that lighting, so they won't really get to enjoy the lighting on that bridge. And then when you're downtown, you see light on one side, not on the other. So I guess I would just throw it out there that is that it's going to be cheaper to do it now. If we were going to do it, it would be cheaper to do both of them now, to make it look, you know, kind of right. Otherwise, it's going to be lopsided, and you're only going to enjoy it from one side and not the other, and that's my take on it, so. Is there any other?
Bridge, sorry. Lopsided one side of the bridge, it's.
Like, you know, like, the one side of the city will get to enjoy the light, the other side, you know, if you're on the other side, it'll be blacked. The one bridge will black the light of the, of that side of the bridge. So, it's just food for thought, I guess. Any other questions for me? Thank you.
I guess for me, it's really about enjoying the, the bridge lighting when you're downtown, not, because really, like where I live, I'm not going to be able to take apart and enjoy the bridge lighting unless I go downtown. So for me, it's really about, you know, people coming downtown, enjoying, enjoying the activity. I don't disagree, though. Two, two bridge lightings would be nice, but, but if two bridge lightings can't pass, then maybe one would be good, but I don't know if it could pass or not. Mr. Catna?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to the lighting of both bridges. It was asked or discussed that previously. The leadership committee that had brought this forward from the heart had the intent on one bridge. I would support two bridges being lit, and since this, since this might be the last time we talk about it, before we go forward with the project, I would just encourage the public to take a look at other cities that have done this. I believe we have pictures, we were sent pictures from Green Bay. It becomes, it brings the downtown as more of a central point, and especially in a, they have social media or looking for things to do outside with the walking paths there. I believe this would bring traffic and not only bring value to the downtown through bringing more people, but also just aesthetics and all the people we have down there on the Fourth of July, and the ability as a community to light the bridge, the appropriate colors, to celebrate together, the appropriate holidays, et cetera. So I would support both bridges, but if we had to go with one, my opinion would be the Grand Avenue Bridge.
Mr. Eom?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, it's, Green Bay was the one, I think, that mostly the conversation was with, but just think about what you see on the news and that, when they show these things, bridges being lighted. Yeah, this is, it would be something to bring the people, hopefully downtown, to enjoy. The lights will also be able to be changed. It's not going to be just set here, and this is what we look at. It's going to be, could be something in, to some type of changing, in motion, whatever type of thing to do. Look at the Home Bridge in Milwaukee even, look at, look at what different communities do even with buildings and that. This is something that people talk about art and whatever, that there's a possibility of what type of artwork can we provide with the downtown? And also, if you look at some of these communities that have it on their bridge, it may not just be with the downtown, but it actually has with the traveling public using the bridge, such as that maybe in the future, if something like this would work downtown, to actually do something, maybe if it could be done, with the Expressway Bridge even, as people are going through town that, wow, what does this community do? And they look down the river, or up the river from there, and they see lights maybe on another bridge. Hey, I'd better turn off. What the heck is going on here? Something like this could be a big promotional thing for the city of Wisconsin Rapids. Something that started out with a group with the idea to do this was great, and it got so far, but now it's been picked up. But just because it started as a seed, maybe that plant has grown a little bit more than enough with maybe some watering and thinking more that it's enlarged to, hey, maybe not just the one, maybe not, maybe what the intent, what they were thinking about when this started, but look at what it's become. What we're talking about doing is a lot more than I think this group, leadership group envisioned a few years back. Thanks to them, that they came forward with this. But now the opportunity is there, and more has been looked into what actually could be done with this. And I would highly recommend that you would consider at this time, because as I think was related to the cost, if you want to do the next one, another one a few years from now is going to go up. So if there's thoughts of doing the two, I would recommend that you do that now. I'd also recommend it to do now anyway, because I think it would be the best, the best route to go. But this is something that, as I said, is artwork for the community. And we have people, groups that try to promote the arts. Well, this would be one. This is something that is going to be lit up year-round, not just for the Fourth of July, not just for a parade that we may have, for Cherry Blossom Festivals, Labor Day, or something like that, Christmas. It's going to operate the whole time. 365 24/7? No, I don't know how much we'll see in the daytime necessarily, we've lit up at night, but I'd highly recommend that you go with the two bridges at this time, if you're going to do the project at all. It'd be a great enhancement to downtown. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Zachar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If by chance we voted down this motion, I would make a new motion to send it back to engineering and to give us more time to kind of plan, plan it out and think more about it. I think it's a big project, and I, I kind of like what I said at committee. I don't feel super qualified to make these calls right now, but I do like the project. I think it's great, and I want to keep it on, you know, in forward motion, but maybe we need a little more time. Thank you.
Tim had his hand up also, if we can go with Tim real quick.
Sure, I was just, I just kind of pulled up the TID number seven map, which is where the funding for this would come, and I was kind of looking at it, and I realized that the Jackson Street Bridge is actually not within the TID boundaries, so it would not be able to be funded from the TIF increment. Just the West Grand.
I'm sorry, did you say the Jackson Street Bridge was not in, would not be able to be part of the TIF?
Correct.
Right. It's actually, when you look at the TIF boundaries, it goes down, uh, west, uh, Grand Avenue Bridge, it then goes up First Street. So it excludes the Jackson Street Bridge, so it's outside the TID boundaries and wouldn't be eligible for TID funding.
Um, Alderperson Bebkey, was there a dollar amount in your motion?
I did not give a dollar amount because there is some donated money to be donated at, um, at the community foundation and I cannot tell you what that dollar amount is.
Okay.
Well, what was the number? Oh, three, three hundred thou- three hundred twenty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Catna?
Thank you. I was actually gonna motion an amendment to see if everybody wanted to do two bridges or one, but based on what Tim said, we'll stick with Grand Avenue. I did want to give Tim the opportunity, if the public's watching, to just do a quick overview of the TID district so that there's an understanding of where this money's coming from. It's not coming out of our budget, it's from the tax incremental district.
Right. We have a, our downtown TID, which is TID number seven, and which encompasses a, a good chunk of the downtown. And what it is, is that when you establish a TID, you come up with a project plan and you determine the parcels that are gonna be contained in the TID. And then at that point, you determine the base value, the assessed value, equalized value of the existing parcels, and that's what's called the baseline. And then once you have the TID approved, which is approved by the, um, Joint Review Board, which has representatives from the city, the school district, the county, and the technical college, um, any growth within that TID, so any increase in the value in that TID, you're able to recapture that, those property taxes, which is called tax increment. You not only capture the city's portion of that, but you're also able to capture the, the school districts, the county portion, and the, the mid-state, so you get the full value of that. That's why they have representation on the Joint Review Board. And then those, that tax increment, as, as you get that growth, is used to fund projects that are identified in the original project plan. So when you go to establish that TID, you come up with a project plan and budget for the types of projects that you wanna undertake within that TID. And the bridge lighting was one of those, uh, projects that was identified in the downtown TID. So that increment is being used for that. The city is not allowed to use that increment for any other projects that are not in the project plan or that are outside the, the TIF boundaries.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve doing the bridge lighting on the Grand Avenue oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Austin.
Uh, back to Tim. Tim, can you just give a brief overview of other projects within that TID district?
Sure. Um, uh, well, well, West Grand, when we reconstructed, uh, West Grand Avenue, or East Grand, excuse me, East Grand Avenue, uh, that was a TID eligible project. There's also the, um, the river wall, um, the maintenance or repair of the river wall was within that. Plus, there's a park improvement, uh, budgeted in, in that, uh, TID also, um, just some kinda, um, generic, uh, development type things, development incentives and things like that describing. So if we have development, the city's able to use some of that increment to offer incentives or pay for infrastructure for that development.
Uh, Mr. Delaney?
I just want to, uh, re-go over this one more time. So if we do the two bridges, one of the bridges has to come out of the general fund, is that correct? And if we just do the one bridge, it all gets paid by the, uh, tax.
The Grand Avenue Bridge would be TIF eligible.
All right. Sounds good. Thanks.
All right. Anything further? So we have a motion to do the Grand Avenue Bridge, full lighting, three hundred and... Three twenty-six, five seventy-three. Okay. Seeing nothing else, please cast your ballots. Uh, Mr. Venemen?
Aye.
That motion carried seven a's, one nay. I look forward to being there when the, the light switch is turned on. Uh, we're on to item seven. Mr. Austin?
I would give, um, the gentleman from Capital Recovery the floor if he chooses.
Glenn, if you could, uh, make sure the microphone green light on the bottom's on?
There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for the opportunity to, uh, speak to you. As Kyle mentioned, uh, we would request the opportunity to, in place of the letter of credit, instead have a insurance policy that the city would be named as a co-beneficiary in case there was, uh, some, uh, either, uh, issue that arose that you were unhappy with or, uh, damage to some city, uh, infrastructure. Kyle and I discussed, um, last week. Just slight bit of background about myself. I'm the former manager of the Luke Paper Mill, which is a sister mill to this one. So I've shared the road that you and the community are going through. It's, uh, it's a difficult journey. Uh, but we're, uh, in the middle of a similar process at Luke, and so we did exactly that with the city of, uh, Luke. We have an insurance policy that protects us, Capital Recovery Group, um, and named the city as a co-beneficiary. And then we have a large second party on site, um, and we were, we expected them, but the city also set a condition for their permit, that they named the city as a co-beneficiary for the project that they are in the middle of.
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Catna?
I'm gonna ask staff here that would require change in ordinance.
You mean to change the surety or what we're receiving as a guarantee for damages? Is that, you mean, because the ordinance says letter of credit?
Right.
Yeah, I, I think, um, I would be okay if, uh, I mean, the language about the letter of credit is in, is on the permit regarding what we're requiring, and I, it just says post an irrevocable letter of credit or other acceptable surety. I mean, general, that would refer to a letter of credit. I mean, a letter of credit is the best thing to have. It's like on-demand, you, you damaged our streetlights, you go and you, you get, I mean, you get that money. You make a demand, you get the money. There's no litigation, there's no, I shouldn't say litigation, there's no, it's quick. An insurance policy is, you know, how, making a claim for insurance and who, are you really qualified in? So there is, it, it's not as, uh, you know, hassle-free as a letter of credit. I guess I, I would agree, um, to, i- if, if we added in the permit that at the, um, at the discretion of the city attorney and community development director, uh, this provision may be satisfied by a policy of insurance with the city as co-beneficiary, ensuring any city loss in a form acceptable to the city attorney. I, I, you know, not seeing the insurance policy and the terms and such, but I, we will work with you. I mean, it, and at this point, all you're doing is auctioning things. It's not appropriate now, when you reach, or necessary now, when you reach the point where you're gonna maybe take down some buildings. We'll look at, you know, where is it happening? Are there road concerns? Is there other infrastructure concerns? Decide maybe what those possible, you know, losses or damages could be and then, and figure that out. I mean, I don't, we don't want you spending money on things before we really even know what's necessary. So I think we could allow that flexibility. I'm, I'm hesitant to just say, yeah, we'll go with the insurance, not, you know, really seeing the insurance policy and how it would be handled and, but I think between us, we would be able to work that out if we could just add that, that that's something that we definitely will look at, if that's agreeable with you.
Understood. That'd be, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
So there should be no need for change in...
No. I mean, it says...
Right now, but we'll...
Right. I, I would suggest that the motion basically, you know, be as is and then I could add what we basically said were, that we would accept, um, this other form of guarantee for loss, wh- what I had said about the, having an insurance policy rather than a letter of credit.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Austin?
No, go ahead. I'm sorry if I'm...
Oh, that's all right. I didn't know we were moving so...
Seconded by Zachary.
So quick. I, I would just encourage everybody to go watch the finance meeting, um, this gentleman spoke at in regards to the Capital Recovery Group and what their plan is with the property, the different properties of the mill. I won't bother with you going over it again, but it is available for those to watch that are wondering what's going on with the property. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Mr. De Sorcey? Oh, that was a stretch? Oh, the budget. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Seeing nothing else, please cast your ballots. Mr. Venemen?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried six a's, two nays. Good to go, Glenn. All right. We're on to item B, Public Works Committee meeting held April fourth. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, um, leave it to me to complicate things here.
It's all right.
But on the bridge lighting?
Okay.
Is there any way we can revisit that?
We could have a mo- as long as it's had the same meaning, we could have a motion for reconsideration, because I think you probably have the same information that was just sent to me regarding the TID? Or is that...
Well...
Are we not talking about the same thing here?
Yeah.
I think you can e- explain why you might, that should be considered.
Basically, it's like when I was looking at the TID map, but then further down in the plan, TID plan document, about twelve pages down, I noticed where they had a map of the projects and they did identify the Jackson Street Bridge as that, even though it was outside the TID. So even though it's outside the TID boundaries, when I looked at about twelve pages down, they had a project map that identified the Jackson Street Bridge. Sorry, apologize, but...
Right. And because it was within a half mile, is that because of the half mile of the TID and it was included in the project plan? Or you're saying really this...
A lot of times, the ones out, the projects outside, if it services the TID, like for infrastructure and things like that, but, um, I noticed on the project map, they did a, identify the Jackson Street Bridge and Grand Avenue Bridge. I apologize for that. In the TIF plan, they have the, the, the TIF boundary map, but then later in the document, there's actual map where they, they kinda point out the projects that are identified in the budget for that.
Yep. So Mr. Delaney makes a motion to reconsider?
Correct, yes.
Motion to re... Okay. So motion to rescind?
Motion to rescind, yes.
And we have a second by Mr. Ream to rescind? Okay. All right. So we have a motion to rescind. Is there any questions or comments on that? So basically, you're voting to rescind that motion for a aye or a, a nay would be, no, you wanna leave it as is? Okay. Please cast your ballots. Mr. Venemen?
Aye.
So we have six a's, two nays. Okay. Now what do you guys wanna do? Oh, let the clerk, like, catch up?
I'll make a motion.
Uh, Mr. Delaney already beat you to it.
Okay.
He didn't get his button pushed fast enough. Mr. Delaney, what's your motion?
I'd like him to make a motion to include both bridges with this project, provided that it is paid for with the tax incremental district.
For a total of...
Oh, it was six hundred...
Six oh-two. Oh, yeah, it's in the finance report.
Yes.
So, yeah, as, as presented in the finance report?
Correct.
Okay. And is, is, you're seconding that, Mr. Ream? All right. Any further discussion? Uh, Mr. Austin?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be voting no to this. I just wanna explain, because I think there are other projects within the TID that we should be looking at other than lighting both of these bridges. I, I feel like the Grand Avenue Bridge is enough and is more centrally located to the downtown area that will provide the effect that I, I feel like we're searching for here. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Uh, Mr. Catna?
Yep. I'm gonna do what I was gonna do before.
That's what we just had. To bring it back to the original? Do you wanna recognize? Uh, Mr. Bemke?
I'd like to recognize, Matty.
Green light on?
Green lights on.
All right.
Sometimes the face isn't close enough, so not as appreciated. Uh, my name's Matty Palmquist. I'm at one-two-three-one Cook Avenue. Um, I would like to echo Ryan's statements in that I really like the idea of bridge lighting, uh, worry about the other projects that take money from that TID and if we use what we have in that amount, in that fund, if there's going to be enough for those other projects. There's not a, a guarantee that there is, if I'm understanding correctly? Sure. If we can discuss.
I mean, right now, the, the downtown TID has a twelve-twenty, uh, December twenty-first, twenty-three has about five-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars available in that fund. With the increments coming in at around five-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, twenty-four, uh, for, in twenty-four, we'll have about one-point-one million dollars. Now, uh, we have, the TID life extends out to twenty-thirty-one, so if you kinda project out that increment that we got in twenty-four out through twenty-thirty-one, we'll have about four-point-seven million dollars projected to be, uh, additional funds or total funds in, in that. The expenditure period for the downtown TID, uh, however, expend, uh, expires in twenty-twenty-seven. So you're only allowed to make expenditures through twenty-seven, but you can collect the increment through twenty-thirty-one. But this is obviously projections. So if values drop or change in that TID, you know, obviously, the increment will decrease. But right now, we're seeing an increase in that increment, but that's not guaranteed. This is just a projection based on what we're getting presently.
Great. So if we do the one bridge now and we project that it remains the same, we should, there should be enough money to do both of the bridges and the other projects in the future, but that's not a guarantee. So if we do one now, then it would be optimal if there's that money to use it before it expires and then we have the opportunity to do that second bridge. And there's a, there's a third bridge, so we could do two bridges at that time.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bemke?
Um, so Joe, you sent out an estimate for the repair of the wall.
Um, so Joe, you sent out an estimate for the repair of the wall, I believe, earlier in the week, and then, if you could answer that, and then to Kyle, could you maybe address some of the other changes that this TIP money could be used for downtown in the future?
So the River Wall rehabilitation project, right along Veterans Park and Mead Rapids View Park, would be estimated at about a million dollars, and would be a possible project for twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six.
Uh, in response to the second question, I just emailed the Alders, the page twelve of TIP seven plan, which shows the improvements, there are a total of ten improvements that have been identified. I think the, the other crucial thing to note here is, you know, TIP districts exist to spark development, and the way we do that, and we're competitive, is through incentives to businesses and developers, and knowing that TIP seven has a potential increment of three million dollars, I think the highest value that that TIP could offer for any of the development opportunities downtown is, is an upfront incentive, you know, for a mixed-use development on the Triangle Property or, or the Tribune Site. Obviously, if, if the funds are allocated for something else, we can always do a project-specific TIP district as well, to still provide that incentive. So I, I'm not too concerned if, if, you know, expenditures happen and, and these projects occur within that TIP, because again, there's the ability to create a new TIP, because we have more opportunities to extend any incentive over the life of the TIP district, rather than only being able to provide a few years' worth of pay-go TIP versus an upfront incentive. If that doesn't make sense, I can explain it further, but you've got that list in your email inbox, I can also pull it up, and now you know that, right, we, we can, we can utilize TIP for in, incentives to businesses, thank you.
Mr. Ream?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, and I think, I guess a question, or not a question, it was a comment I was gonna make earlier anyway, but as Tim has spoken, the amount of money expected, not guaranteed, there's not a whole lot maybe in life that is guaranteed, except it ends, it's gonna end. That the projected money is, there's gonna be a huge amount of money there, and that, I think not to do something now would be, is the wrong move to make. So I think the, where we're at now with the, between one or two bridges, that I would stick with the, doing the two bridges, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. De Sorcey.
I, I just want to have a good note, as you're looking at that page twelve, you, you kind of see that there's, there's project estimates, and obviously, you know, like, the, the bridge lighting was two hundred thousand, but that's just an estimate, there's wording in the plan, and there's obviously an anticipation that projects, you know, the, the city has the right to kind of expend over certain projects that they, they realize that these are estimates, and it's more of the overall budget, so I just wanted to kind of clarify that, so if anyone's looking, that there's only two hundred thousand in the plan for bridge lighting, that's just an estimate, but obviously, the, the TIP is worded in such a way that you have leeway with inflationary costs, and, and, you know, other projects don't happen to, so...
Mr. Austin?
So, taking a look at these projects, as well as looking at the TIP district, the River Wall, a million bucks, the Northern Castings, the foundry that burned down, raising and, and potentially contamination that has to be addressed with over there, I'm assuming is also potentially funded through the TIP. Kyle, could you speak to that?
Yeah, the hope is for that project, we can get a lot of money through the DNR and the WEDC, but there, you know, there could be twenty to fifty percent of the costs borne by the city in the event that we don't get certain grants, or we're, we're not on their timeline, or maybe we have an interested party and we want to try to fast-track things. But the thought was to spend the next three to five years or so accessing all those grants that are available for cleanup.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Veneman, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. Alright, seeing nothing else, please cast your ballots. To do both bridges for... Yep. Uh, Mr. Veneman?
Aye.
That motion carried five As, two Nays. Great, moving on to item B. Mr. Ream, Public Works Report.
Thanks for your waiting, I jumped ahead to the next committee, not mine. Public Works Committee met on Thursday, April 4th, 2024, in the council chambers at City Hall. All members were present, except Mr. Austin, who's excused, others attending are listed on the sign-in sheet. Item one was called a meeting order, the meeting was called order at 5:00 PM. Item two, review engineering and Street Department monthly activity report, reports reviewed. Item three was to review and consider approving the Engineering and Waste Water Department policy regarding the emergency lateral fund for private sanitary laterals within the public right-of-way. There's a motion by Ream, seconded by Pollock, to approve the right-of-way lateral repair fund policy, and that motion carried two to zero. Item four, review bid results and consider award of the West River View Expressway and High Street, Chase Street Traffic Signal Improvement Project. There's a motion by Ream, seconded by Pollock, to award the West River View Expressway and High Street, Chase Street Traffic Signal Improvements Project to the low-qualified bidder, Fanner Electric, in the amount of five, three hundred thirty-one thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars and ninety-five cents, and that motion carried two to zero. Item five, review of the bridge lighting project, the lighting project was reviewed. Item six, review and consider approving the TMDL Compliance Implementation Plan. There's a motion by Ream, seconded by Pollock, to approve the TMDL Compliance Implementa- Implementation Plan, the motion carried two to zero. Item seven, review and consider approving a municipal separate storm sewer system, MS4 Annual Report. There's a motion by Ream, seconded by Pollock, to approve the MS4 Annual Report for 2023, and that motion carried two to zero. Item eight, review the referral list. The list was reviewed with the addition of an on-street parking request on Oak Street between Seventh Street South and Eighth Street South. Item nine was to set the next meeting date, the next meeting will be determined at April 16th, reorganizational council meeting. Item 10 was to adjourn, there was a motion by Ream, seconded by Pollock, to adjourn at 5:42 PM, and that motion carried two to zero, and with Your Honor, I would move for adoption of the report.
Thank you, Mr. Ream, we have a motion by Ream, seconded by Pollock, any discussion on the, on the report? Okay, seeing none? Please cast your ballots. Mr. Veneman?
Aye.
Thank you, that motion carried seven As, one Nay. Alright, item C, a lengthy Human Resource Committee Report, Mr. Bemke?
Thank you, Mayor. The scheduled April 8th Human Resource Committee meeting was not held due to lack of a quorum, so there was a human, a, a Human Resource Update on the agenda, and no reason to adjourn the meeting, so, thank you.
Thank you. So... Yep, so there's no need for a motion. We're on to item eight, Reports of Other Committees, Commission Boards, and Department Reports, those are there for your reading pleasure and knowledge. We're on to item nine, which is referral to committees, and, do you have any referrals? Alright, I wouldn't expect probably much, and item 10, adjournment. We have a motion by... Any buttons want to push? Motion by Bemke, seconded by Zachary, please cast your ballots. Mr. Veneman?
Aye.
Thank you, enjoy the weather.